Live stream is up. Mr. Munoz, can you hear us?
I can hear you.
When we go to executive session, you'll have to leave the meeting and join the other one.
Yep, I'll be ready.
Thank you.
We will go ahead and get started with a roll call.
Who is absent tonight? Mr. Munoz?
Present.
Thank you. Dr. Bonebrake?
Here.
Mrs. Schmidt?
Present.
Dr. Schumacher?
Here.
Mr. Tatum?
Here.
And Dr. Beeson? Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Slistre. And so we will move right along and look for a motion to recess to executive session.
Mr. President, I move the Board of Education of USD 501 recess into executive session for 30 minutes pursuant to the personnel exception of the Kansas Open Meetings Act to discuss confidential personnel matters to protect the privacy of the individuals discussed. The board will return to open session in the boardroom at 6:02 PM. The superintendent and executive staff are invited into executive session.
Do I have a second for that motion? Mr. Tatum? Any discussion? Okay, we will vote.
Vote is open. Mr. Munoz, show of hands.
I vote yea.
Thank you. Okay. Gotcha. All votes are in and the motion carries.
Thank you.
Exec session has been extended to six thirteen.
And we will move to the pledge of allegiance.
All right, and I'm looking to see if we have students. We don't, but it's Hispanic Heritage Month and we do have the Director, General Director of Cultural Innovation. Can you lead us off with the pledge?
Sure. Thank you, Dr. Mejia.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Mejia. We will move on to the next item, which is the adoption of the agenda. And so I just need a motion for that.
Mr. President, I move the board adopt the agenda as presented.
And a second. Mr. Tatum. Any discussion or questions on the agenda? Okay, seeing none, we'll move to a vote.
Miss Lister, I vote yea.
Thank you. And we will move to school highlights.
Thank you. At this time, Dr. Mejia will come forward to read the proclamation for Hispanic Heritage Month. I believe we also have a video. Let me make sure and look around. No video for Hispanic Heritage Month because the video will be the students next week. Shame on me. So we have students in two weeks coming and Dr. Mejia, our Director, our General Director of Cultural Innovation. We'll turn it over to her for the proclamation and if she has any highlights she'd like to share about dual language or anything that's for the viewers, she can do that as well at the end.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson. Good evening. I'll start with the proclamation. Proclamation of Topeka Unified School District number five oh one, Hispanic Heritage Month, September fifteen through October fifteen, twenty twenty five. Whereas each year, September fifteen through October fifteen is set aside to commemorate the contributions made by Hispanics throughout our nation's history. And whereas it is a month to reflect not only on the past, but also the future role for of Hispanics in the United States. And whereas the Topeka Public Schools joins its fellow citizens in recognizing Hispanic Heritage Month as a means of celebrating the Hispanic contributions to our country's culture and heritage. And whereas it is fitting that the board, staff and students of the Topeka Public Schools USD five oh one join the observance. Now therefore be it resolved that Topeka Public Schools Unified School District number five oh one, Topeka, Kansas does proclaim September fifteenth through October fifteenth, twenty twenty five as Hispanic Heritage Month to celebrate through activities and programs that enlighten and inspire our understanding of the amazing heritage of our Hispanic students, families, staff and community. And be it further resolved that a copy of the proclamation be included in the minutes of the Board of Education meeting September eighteenth, twenty twenty five. In witness whereof, we, the staff of Topeka Public Schools District number five oh one, do hereby affix the signature of our Board President and the official seal of the Board of Education this eighteenth day of September, twenty twenty five. And so throughout the district, there are multiple exciting things going on in celebration of Hispanic Heritage Month. Robinson Middle School had a fantastic event on Monday with dances, with food. Typically, these events include kind of the same things, but represented in multiple represented in multiple ways. So Robinson had their big event. We also have Atlanta Middle School a Pachanga night and Pachanga means like party. So they will also have great, you know, they will have different people coming in. Food trucks, they will have, they will be selling T-shirts that people can design for, you know, Hispanic Heritage Month. They will have dual language shirts also that can be purchased. And of course, the food and the music. And again, because it's a Pachanga, it's a party. It'll be very lively and exciting. Scott Dual Language Magnet always celebrates big as well. Highland Park Central, you can tell there's decorations already like papel picado or the chopped paper on the ceilings to celebrate. You can breathe it and live it throughout the district. So I encourage you, board members, to go around the district and find your jam.
Thank you, Dr. Mejia.
Thank you.
Any questions for Dr. Mejia?
Any questions?
And you will until And you will, in two weeks, either see artwork or music. And later, we have, under chronic absenteeism, some principals. So if you have questions beyond what she has shared, you can ask them. Thank you again, Dr. Mejia.
Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Anderson, is there anything else in? I don't think in school highlights.
It's not in school highlights, but once you conclude the consent agenda, I'll mention if we have a guest or two who was approved in the consent agenda.
Oh, yeah.
Be sure to acknowledge them.
Perfect. Thank you. So we will move on to the next section, Public Communications, and I'm looking to Ms. Lister.
We have no request to speak.
We have none. Thank you. And so we will move to our business by consent, and I'll look for a motion on that.
Mr. President, I move the board approve the items of business by consent as presented and authorize the Board President or Superintendent to sign the special project and purchasing contracts for and on behalf of the board.
Is there a second? Dr. Bonebrake. Okay, maybe Dr. Bonebrake, do you want to second the motion? Okay, and any questions on the motion? Yes, Dr. Bonebrake. Here, microphone, please.
On their percussion instrument acquisition, it wasn't the lowest bid. Manning Music was twenty-three hundred dollars less.
So Ms. Wallace, the percussion instrument was the question, that why do we go with the company that we went with because it wasn't the lowest bid, and if that's something I'll turn over to you.
So sometimes that goes to quality and whether or not the instrument is going to have the longevity that we need for it to have.
Okay, so it was apples and oranges, sort of.
It can be, yes.
And then I had another question.
Yeah.
About special education. The state destroyed KNI, what, twenty-five, thirty years ago? And now they're working students, people back into that. And now we are going to have three students transferred to KNI. Are we paying a hundred percent of it, or seventy percent, as the legislature suggested it's worth? Are we paying a hundred percent or seventy percent?
So it's a partnership, and at this time, the program will be located at KNI, and we're providing the staff person.
So we're paying the staff person, then?
Yes, the staff, we've hired the staff person, and so once we get this MOU agreed to, then that program can start.
And students that we currently have in our schools that qualify will be able to now access a service beyond our schools at no additional cost to us because we would have had a staff person for them anyway in our own schools, but instead, that person will be located at KNI. And Mr. Lowers over Special Education is here to talk more about that. He can do that now, or he can do that at the end of the?
Yeah, I think that would be okay if he's?
Mr. Lowers?
Yeah.
Yes, great questions. We're very excited about this new partnership we're forming. You'd see in the audience, Mr. Scott Brunner's here also from the Department of Aging and Disability Services. We've been working with them and the staff at KNI. Mr. Dr. Bonebrake asked a great question. KNI did have a juvenile program up to about twenty years ago. They actually had six full classrooms there, and they served young people who have very intense neurological needs. There's a very grave shortage of placements for kids. Currently, we have students that go to like the Parsons State Hospital or the Larnard Facility. They have a hospital there as well. For, these are for kids that have very, very intense needs and have not been successful in a traditional school setting. We were approached in this new partnership between KNI, the State of Kansas, and USD 501. We formed this partnership. That's the contract that you guys have up for approval this evening. For it, I have hired an additional teacher who's highly skilled and working with the students. We're going to collect, as far as a question about aid and the cost, we're going to collect the categorical aid and federal aid for that teacher, and the State of Kansas is going to pay the remainder. So, no. So there'll be no, no cost for that teacher for us.
Does that answer your question, Dr. Bonebrake? Since Mr. Lowers is here, we were going to acknowledge Mr. Brunner to come up at the end of the vote, but since he's up here, is that okay to do that?
Yeah, that would be fine.
Mr. Brunner, can you come on up? But with the Department of Aging, we are excited about the opportunity. We've asked our staff to identify students who could benefit, who could have services beyond the school that might not be, where the school may not be meeting their needs. It's a high bar in terms of qualifying, but for those that qualify, they now will have the service that they wouldn't have had before for mental health extensions. We'll turn it over to both gentlemen. Is there anything else you'd like to share regarding the unique nature and the positive contribution this partnership might be making?
Thank you for the opportunity. Scott Brunner, I'm the Deputy Secretary for the Department on Aging and Disability Services. I oversee the, our four existing state hospitals, including KNI. We're very excited about the opportunity to both expand the service offerings at KNI right now. And for the last twenty years, we've only served adults with intellectual disabilities that often also have co-occurring medical conditions. So they're medically frail, and that's kind of the population that we've targeted on that campus. Parsons State Hospital, of course, serves a broader age range and including some kids. But what we found in the last several years is that we've got about a sixteen-child waitlist to be admitted to Parsons with no space there to do it. So we were trying to look across our system where there might be some additional capacity and space. KNI had some interest, number one, and some space, number two, and then was willing to get some specialized training for our team to be able to support kids that we didn't have. And then we, of course, needed an educational partner as well. And so we're excited to be able to talk to USD 501 about that opportunity as we bring kids to campus and then also make that available for kids already in your district that might benefit or get some, be able to use the services that we offer on the KNI campus. So we're excited about the partnership. Well, again, our intent is not to add burden to the district or the city of Topeka, but to kind of supplement as we go and pay for the services that we're going to be using. So, but we're very excited about the opportunity. We're starting slow and small, but again, we hope that can grow over time. But I'm happy to answer questions if you've got any for me.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Brunner? Yeah, Dr. Beeson.
So at KNI, will it be a residential facility for children either in Topeka or from outside the area?
That's correct. We'll admit children, school age, upper elementary and through high school age, that they'll live on campus. We'll support them twenty-four hours a day, and then we'll have the school services available in a different building, in our administration building. But they'll be part of our campus and residential students. And then what we've been talking about with the district is, could we do a day program as well for students that maybe aren't, that would meet our residential criteria, but don't quite need that yet?
Could go home.
Or we could supplement, yes. So we're trying to figure that out as well as a different option, particularly for students in your district.
So this helps shorten wait lists at PRTFs also, perhaps, or not necessarily the same?
If they've been to a PRTF first, if they've been there first.
They have been there, okay.
Through that, the referral.
There are some kids that get to a PRTF placement, a psychiatric residential treatment facility. We're targeting kids that are on our waitlist for Parsons, which means they'd be, they've gone through the screening process for an intellectual, for a, sorry to throw that acronym. I won't do the acronyms. I'll just try to call it out. Intermediate Care Facilities, that's what KNI and Parsons are. There's a very extensive screening process that works with community development and disability organizations to identify the clinical needs, the family's needs. So they're approved for admission. The kids that are waiting for Parsons are approved for admission there and pull some of those off the waiting list.
Okay.
Again, there's sixteen kids that are waiting that we don't just have the beds for. So they would otherwise typically be in a hospital setting. They might be in a PRTF. So again, we're hoping to free up some of that capacity as well.
Thank you.
Other questions? Okay, thank you very much.
There's one other thing I did want to, I want to acknowledge in this. KNI, I know this may seem like an odd statement, but KNI has their own dentist. And for those of us that have worked with kids with, you know, pretty intense disabilities, finding a dentist, you know, when they have to be anesthetized and trying to get dental care is very, very difficult. And I don't know about you, but if I have one tooth that hurts, I, that's very, very difficult for me. It'd be hard for me to learn. So the state and KNI have volunteered that our children who attend there will get free dental care. Beyond that, they've now, they've agreed that children within USD 501 who have intense needs, whether they go to KNI or not, can make an appointment and get free dental care there.
That's great.
That's part of.
So that's part of this, this MOU that will be, MOU when that starts.
Yeah.
So we're excited about this next step. We thank Mr. Brunner, Mr. Lowers, and I will tell you, when they called over the summer and said, hey, we're in your backyard, we had that meeting immediately, and I'm excited because you may remember Minniger's that was here at one time. About ten years ago, we called to see if they'd come back. They said no, because they are now in Texas. And so this is really kind of a dream come true for us of how do we get more services to kids in need? So we're excited. Should you approve the MOU? And again, thank you, Mr. Brunner, for being here this week.
Yes, thank you, guys. So there is a motion and a second. Yep, and another question? Other, yep?
I have another question on item thirteen point one of the consent agenda, the contract renewal with Mr. Bob Winkler for assessment services. Can you, can it be explained to the board a little bit about the deliverables that this person is providing to the district?
Absolutely.
Absolutely. Yes, Mr. Winkler's been with us for, coming on ten years. Two years ago, I reduced his position to halftime. He primarily has been responsible for the partnership with KU and Kathleen Lane in implementing our SRSS data. He also provides a wealth of information over the years in terms of state assessments. He's been on the boards with KSDE. So he's kind of my right-hand man when it comes to state assessments or any kind of social emotional measurements.
So that's our screening instrument. So while some people think Kip does it all, there actually is another part-time person.
Okay, and is there a reason why we're paying him a car allowance on top of the contract amount?
He drives from Kansas City. I know, yeah. You know, that's something that, you know, we could look at deeper and renegotiate something like that if that's a problem with the rest of the board.
I'm just, so, separate from this specific thing, working in the position that I work in now has just brought a light to a lot of things. And I think as a, not to get on a soapbox, but we need to be making sure that we're being really fiscally responsible. When you look at the pies across the state or in the city of Topeka, because that's where our school district is, you know, there are three large slices, and that's the county, the city, and USD 501. And so in my experience, primarily when people have contracts, that it's like all one thing. And I guess, you know, he could have written it for, what, twenty-eight thousand instead of the twenty-five and three? But I just find it kind of unusual that you call out when you're a contractor, the nature of your work a lot of times is to be on the move, and there's an assumption with that. So I was just curious why we're doing that.
Other thoughts on the agenda, on the consent agenda? Yes, Dr. Beeson gets to go first.
Let's see, there's a handbook portion, middle school and high school, and I think the changes were related to the cellphone policy. Is that correct?
Correct. So on June fifth, you approved the middle school handbooks. And since then, we changed the cellphone policy. So they updated theirs, and they were reviewed and approved by Mrs. Whitman, and then I put them on the board agenda. This is the first time the high school handbooks are, have been on the agenda for approval, and they also include language for the new cellphone policy.
Right. I, looking at Jardines and Eisenhowers, I just felt like the language was a little confusing, and maybe it's just me, but I think there, there's a portion in each of them that remains from the old one that sort of says unless foreign educational activity or instructional activity led by the teacher. And I think that's what we did not, yeah, we wanted to remove. So I just didn't want to add to confusion if.
So note that we'll get those adjusted and make those changes.
Okay, thank you.
We're requesting approval with the changes for the appropriate.
Yeah. Mr. Tatum?
Yeah, so wanted to say that while my friend Scott Brunner is still here, what a wonderful opportunity it is for all 501 students to be able to get dental care who need it from KNI. And as someone who put in about twenty years of my professional life at KNI in various capacities, I'm really proud of the partnership between KNI and USD 501, two institutions that are very important to me and have been pretty formative in my, in my professional development. Going back to the issue that was just raised by Mrs. Schmidt about item thirteen point one, what did we decide we were going to do with it? Was Dr. Kip going to go back and to look at that contract and to maybe give us something different, an alternate version? That seemed to be what Mrs. Schmidt was.
We certainly can pull that and bring back. Is there anything wrong with delaying the next two weeks?
Not a problem. We can certainly look at that, reevaluate, renegotiate that portion, yeah.
My curiosity has peaked. I wasn't keyed into this particular issue until Mrs. Schmidt raised it. But now I'd kind of like to see what that looks like.
Sure.
And Ms. Schmidt, if I understood correctly, and thank you for mentioning that, Mr. Tatum, so we take accountability for an exception. If I understood correctly, part of it's a language piece as well, delineating all the things that you do in a contract, such as driving from one place, as opposed to here's what I'm charging, this is the charge, and whether it's driving your food or whatever.
So I'll use my job as an example, right? When I drive from the courthouse over to the annex, I don't, I don't tell the taxpayers, hey, sorry, I'm going to add three thousand dollars on top of my salary for you to pay for me to travel. The assumption is when I take a job, it has certain things that are part of that job, and some of that is travel. Now, I'm not talking about going somewhere, but, you know, traveling from one building to another, that is part of, part of my, the expectation of my duties. So if we can just kind of.
Yeah, I totally get it.
Language, so we will do that, and we'll bring that back in a couple of weeks. Thank you. So we ask for that number to be pulled from the consent agenda.
So the motion was on the whole consent agenda in a second.
We'll need to make a new motion.
Yeah, so we first have to vote on this motion, so I would.
Actually, we can vote to rescind.
Yeah, exactly. So, and then we'll just need to make a new motion after that. So this motion's on the table. This is our whole with no changes. So maybe vote nay on it, and then we'll do a new motion, Ms. Lister? Does that sound okay?
The vote is open.
And hopefully Mr. Munoz has followed along.
I vote nay.
Thank you, Mr. Munoz. This is with no changes. From thirty minutes ago.
All votes are in, and it passes unanimously.
It does pass, or it's?
It does not.
I mean, it doesn't.
Yes.
It passes for no.
For no, thank you. So I would look for, we can go back and do a new motion.
Mr. President, I move the board approve the items of business by consent with the exception of item thirteen point one as presented and authorize the Board President or Superintendent to sign the special project and purchasing contracts for and on behalf of the board.
With the, can we add the addition of the two changes in the?
With the two changes to Ross and Eisenhower and Jardine.
Perfect. Is there a second to that motion, Dr. Beeson? Perfect. Is there a second to that motion, Dr. Beeson? Any further conversation? We can do it all again if you want. Okay, we'll look for a vote on this new motion.
Lister, I vote yea.
Okay, so Mrs. Schmidt made the motion. Who seconded?
Dr. Beeson did.
And the vote is open. All votes are in and this motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you, guys. And so we will continue to move and we are ready for the superintendent's report.
All right. And as we prepare with our report on chronic absenteeism, we're excited that we have several principals on the screen with us. They joined online. We just pulled some principles that are examples of what can happen with some innovative strategies in reducing chronic absenteeism. Dr. Kip and Ms. Wallace will start this PowerPoint just to give us some overview. But first, we want to share who's with us. Starting with our middle school, if you just introduce and share what school you're at, and then our elementaries can go in the order that, oh, I'm sorry, with our middle and high school, you can start with introducing yourself. So let's start with our lead and go from there.
Hi, good evening. Kelly Hoffman, principal at French Middle School.
Good evening. I'm Todd Haig, principal of Jardine Middle School.
Good evening. I'm Amy Wagner, principal at Landon Middle School.
Good evening. Bree Howser, associate principal at Topeka West High School.
And then for our elementaries, we'll start with our M schools, go to our dual language, which I really probably should have started with first for Hispanic Heritage Month. And we'll conclude with our final school from Quincy. Ms. Tiller?
Yes, good evening. I'm Monica Tiller. I'm the principal at McCarter Elementary.
Good evening. Hola a todos. I was just checking, there were no more M schools. This is Andy Moranville, the principal at Scott Dual Language Magnet.
Hi, my name is Kristen Harsha. I'm a special education consulting teacher for the district, but I am currently acting as principal at Quincy while Mrs. Crowe is on maternity leave.
Thank you, leadership team. All right, we're going to turn it over to Dr. Kip and Mrs. Wallace to start with the PowerPoint. And then we'll come back to our principals as they talk about their chronic absenteeism rates at these representative schools.
Okay, good evening. So we will kind of go back and forth. So as we pull up the PowerPoint, the first piece of that is around the definition of chronic absenteeism. So chronic absenteeism is when a student misses 10% or more of their school days and that can be excused or unexcused. And that's about 18 days per school year. And that can be for a variety of reasons. It could be medical, it could be overall wellness, anxiety, social skills. It can also be around disengagement in school.
You got a question?
Dr. Bonbreak, do you have a question?
Yeah, I thought students were only in class for 171 days.
No.
Yeah. I mean, it's, it's kind of a national average. It's in our district, probably more 17 days during the entire school year. It averages about two days a month. If you miss two days a month, every month, you're chronically absent. But the national average, I thought, was about 25%. Yeah, the percentage is, but you know, every school district has so many different days that they have in their calendar. Just the average is about 180 days of school in most calendars. We have about 170. Okay. One thing that we kind of need to clear up is the confusion between truancy and chronic absenteeism. Truancy is only talking about unexcused absences. And we follow the Kansas law, the 357, you know, three consecutive, five, seven, unexcused. That's truancy. Chronic absenteeism, which is what, you know, Ms., Ms. Wallace kind of alluded to, that includes everything, just a lack of seat time. You know, parents sometimes will take, have their kids take a mental health day. That contributes to chronic absenteeism. As you'll see in the next few slides, when we had the COVID pandemic, those kids were not in seat, whether that be virtual or physical. And you'll see a spike in chronic absenteeism throughout the, throughout the US. This is our district chronic absenteeism over the last seven years. And as I mentioned, that spike right around COVID, you know, it was quite a high increase. What is promising is the last four years have really been declining at a rate of, you know, anywhere between 3 to 5%. And I sort of feel if we do everything right this year, we'll hit that state benchmark that that'll keep going down to the state benchmark of about 19. So that's our goal for the year.
If we can interject with Ms. Wallace, prior to 2019, 2020, our chronic absenteeism, what was it in 2016, 2015?
It was about 20%, 20 to 21% pre-COVID. And during the 2019, 2020 school year, we had a laser focus on bringing that number down. And, and we got it down to 11, 12%. So we can do that again.
Right. One, one of the big challenges, when you talk about 10% of time in a high poverty school, you're talking about kids with asthma, talking about parents who are homeless, people who are moving, missing two days a month, evictions, all of that comes into play. Sickle cell, all of the things, diabetes that come into play in a high poverty environment. That, that is what we face. And so in 2016, 17, it was to reduce that footprint. So we were intentional then, excited about 11%. We were well below the national standard and we believe we can get back there with many of those same things. And the reason we have the principals is for you to see how many principals, some from every level and what their rate is already. And it's well below that 20% already. So we're excited about the initiatives that we've launched that's making that happen and the leaders that are making it happen.
So on the screen are the schools that fell at or below the state chronic absenteeism rate.
And that's as of this year?
That was based on 24, 25.
End of last year.
End of last year data.
And all of these schools this year are still below that rate?
Some significantly below where they ended last year.
And some are online as we speak. If you have questions for them.
Is this the end of the PowerPoint before we go to them?
Oh, no, we have a few more questions, but I just wanted to kind of make a mental note of that, of those rates. Okay, so this is a correlation. As Dr. Anderson mentioned, chronic absenteeism does follow the contours of poverty from health-related issues, social issues, transportation. So what I did was took, I took all the districts, large districts in Kansas, over 5,000 students, and plotted their chronic absenteeism in relation to their free reduced population. So as you can see, we're at about a 21% and we're 75% free reduced. The best one in the state is DeSoto. They have an 8% chronic absenteeism, but they only have an 18% free reduce rate. Conversely, KCK, 81% free reduced, 42% chronic absenteeism. This is all public data. I just kind of put this all together. But what jumped out to me was districts like Dodge City who have high poverty and low chronic absenteeism. So actually reached out to the superintendent and the administrative team. We're collaborating, sharing ideas on how they reduce their rates. A lot of it, they have a parent, a director of parent engagement. This, this cannot be done in a vacuum. This cannot be done just by the district. It has to involve parents. They have to understand the implications of missing two days a month. And removing these barriers, like, like Dr. Anderson mentioned, some of these resources that we provide uniquely in 501, I think are going to help reduce some of those barriers for kids getting to school.
So we also wanted to share with you some of the national trends. So it has even across the nation fallen from 31% in 21, 22 to 28%. This is the most current data you can find because it's lagging data. And then, so they were significantly higher than they were pre-pandemic as well. And then just to touch base, I kind of left the school-based strategies so that you can hear from the principals that are online. But some of the things that we're doing at the district level is that we've created a PowerPoint where schools can add their data and personalize it, but that that is what they're sharing and talking about with their school site councils this fall. We've, I hope you've seen some of the posts that are on Facebook. So Communications and Teaching and Learning partnered to collaborate on a social media campaign around the importance of attendance. School Improvement Plans, so all schools have a goal around chronic absenteeism and how to reduce that. And then we're monitoring that through data consults. So just this week, we've met with almost all of the schools and talked about where they are, what they're doing, and really looked at what their chronic absenteeism rate is right now. And some of them are pretty significantly low. And so they're online to kind of share with you what they're doing. And then we've depended on attendanceworks.org, a national organization that provides lots of resources. You can do a root cause analysis around what the barriers are for your families and then take that into a prevention plan. So there's just a lot of resources on that website. And then we want you to hear from the buildings.
So we're going to go to our principals unless, that should be the final slot as we go to our principals and they're going to share each of their chronic absenteeism rates. So you hear that the other district-wide strategy, which we're excited about DCAC because it's really focusing on parents and families. This is about providing support to the entire family, whether it's housing, getting families engaged and connecting with them. And you'll hear a trend in that regard. So we're going to go ahead and turn it over and let's start the other way around with your chronic absenteeism rate. And if there's a strategy or two you want to mention. Well, first, your chronic absenteeism rate. Why don't we start with our Hispanic Heritage Month celebration where at this time? So Dr. Mrs. D Moranville, why don't you start? And then we'll go with Quincy and Ms. Tiller and then go straight to the high school and then the middle.
Sure. So our current rate jumped up from 7%, which we're really proud of, to nine over the last week. And 9% is about 35 students out of our school of 100. And 17 of those students are one percentage point away from not being chronically absent. So we're hoping it'll go back down.
Oh, 7%. What's your free lunch rate?
It's around, it's around 95%, a little bit higher than that.
All right. Quincy, Ms. Harsha, who by the way, is doing a phenomenal job in her principal's absence. It's been impressive.
Thank you. So Quincy, I mentioned in our data consult, is just a really special and welcoming place. And I think that that's really what's helping us to break down that barrier for chronic absenteeism. So we really pride ourselves on relationship building, both with students and parents and families and, and letting them know that it's a safe space. We have an open door policy. We want them there. Parents come in and share, you know, celebrations that are going on in their life, even if things aren't school-related.
And Ms. Harsha, can you share the percentage and what's your free reduced lunch at this point? What's your attendance percentage?
I think we're at 19%. And I'm, I apologize, I'm not sure what our free and reduced rate is, but it would, I would venture to guess that it's high.
You're the highest in the district.
On the special needs index, yes, we have the number one spot.
All right, we'll turn it over to Ms. Tiller.
Yes, hello. So McCarter, we have right now, our current rate is 9%. We've worked really hard to bring that down from last year and really took the data that we collected last year to highlight the students that we knew would come in with that significant need to start front-loading the support that we could give those families. We've partnered with our local churches to start a Lunch Buddy program and we grew our site council to triple what it was previously. And I think with the continued support from our community and our district, our chronic absenteeism rate continues to decrease, which is what we want. And our students really want to be here. It's a safe place. And I think just educating parents and community members on what that really means and how it can affect long-term. I think that that has done an amazing job of just education in general, because I think a lot of people get confused about what truancy is and what chronically absent students are. So collectively with our district and our community members, we've done a really great job of lowering that here at McCarter.
Thank you, Ms. Tiller. For the rest of us, if we can share just our chronic absenteeism rate as well as your free reduced lunch rate. Starting with our high school, Ms. Howser, who's the associate principal.
Last year, we ended a little over 15%. This year, so far, our chronic absenteeism rate is 13.4%. And we hover right between 65 and 70% free and reduced lunch. And I did want to share a fun tidbit. We are still at almost 51% perfect attendance rate so far this year.
And for high schools, highly unusual, Ms. Wallace was sharing. All right, and this is for our lead, Ms. Hoffman, then Ms. Wagner and Mr. Haig.
Hi, French. We are currently down to about 14% chronic absenteeism. Pre-pandemic, we hovered around 12. So that's my goal is to get us back there. And our free and reduced rate is right around in the low 60s.
Ms. Wagner and Mr. Haig.
Hi, at Landon Middle School, we were super excited to lower our chronic absenteeism rate last year to about 14%. This year, we were really kind of fluctuating. At one point, we'll be around 6, 7%. And then we'll kind of go up more towards 10%. And then we're in the 70% for free and reduce.
Thank you. Mr. Haig?
Thank you, Dr. Anderson. Jardine Middle School, we are currently, as of today, we ended the year at 15.3%. Last week when we met, it was at 16.3%. Today, our chronic absenteeism is down to 12.6%. So we work, we work very hard with our admin team and teachers and we are currently sitting, I believe, at 78% free and reduced.
Thank you. We're going to turn it over to the board for questions they may have. So you can share a little bit more about your strategies. Thank you, leadership team. It's impressive.
Yeah, Dr. Bonbreak.
Well, that's just it. I'd like to know specifically more about the strategies. Do you say good morning at the front door to everybody by name?
You want any from elementary, middle or high, since it's so many principals on the screen?
One of each.
Just one of each, middle, high, grade.
All right, Ms. Howser and Ms. Hoffman, what do you do to keep that rate so low? Can you share some of your strategies?
Sure. At French, I mean, I post myself at the front door and we have someone at the back door greeting our bus riders. Our admin team works really hard weekly. We start with our chronically absent kids and we go by them one by one by one and make a note of why is this person absent? Who's had a home contact? Our counselors and our SRO do a great job making home visits. And our STUCO recently, starting last year, put together some monthly incentives as a problem solution activity they did and came up with a, some criteria called the Ever Present Falcon Award. And we do it by grade level and they have organized and some monthly rewards and a raffle that we do at the end of the year.
Thank you.
And then for Topeka West High School, so having almost 1,000 kids, of course, we'd love to greet each one of them by name every day when they walk in, but that would be impossible for our admin team. But every morning, our secretaries present to us a report of the day before for the attendance for the students in our division. And we go through and call in every single kid that missed, or maybe they showed up and were gone for a couple hours in the middle of the day. Hopefully not skipping, but we all know sometimes that happens. And we, we call parents and make sure that they're aware. A lot of times they're not. So bridging that gap between home and school has been really successful. We really focus more on the internal motivation for high schoolers. Of course, you know, as we get older and we just make sure that they really understand how vital attendance is, especially the older you get, when you move into college. and we just make sure that they really understand how vital attendance is, especially the older you get when you move into college or the workforce. So making those connections, um, has been really successful for us.
Thank you. And Ms. De-Morranville.
Yeah. So, um, I would echo many of the same things that my colleagues have already, already mentioned. Um, at Scottsdale Language Magnet though, I think it comes down to connections, education and systems. So with connections, um, like you said, greeting students, knowing their names, but also, um, when we know a kiddo isn't wanting to come to school, we make a point to go and visit them. And if they had trouble last year, we make sure our counselor, Ms. Shin and, um, Ms. Ariana really are the, the feet on the ground for this. They do amazing work with making kids feel seen and like they belong. Um, and just, we try and make school fun. We, we think that when kids are having fun, they're going to want to come to school. They're going to love learning. Um, and then the education part I think is also important. It's our goal that both our students and our parents know why they need to be in school, that what we do in school can't be made up or replicated. Um, so that importance of education is something that we talk about all the time and we include our attendance rate and attendance goals and attendance prizes in our newsletters, as well as have, um, classroom level, student level and grade level rewards that we, um, really celebrate big. And then systems in our office to make sure we, um, are responsive to the data and who is, um, struggling with attendance. And then we have a plethora of plans and tools that we use with our families. So, um, we just love our families too. And so I think those things contribute to our rate.
Thank you. Turn it back over to the board.
Other questions. Mr. Tatum.
Yeah, I think, uh, my question's probably one for Dr. Kip. Uh, because it has to do with the, uh, compiling of the absenteeism data. I'm, I'm guessing you, you might be the person that to kind of shed some light on it. So I'm looking at the, the slide as a part of your presentation. Um, that says schools at or above Kansas average twenty twenty-four, twenty-five and has a breakdown of, of, um, a number of five oh one schools with the percentages of absenteeism. But that would seem to be, I, I think it was actually mentioned specifically. Um, the data that we're looking at on that slide is a data that was compiled for all of the twenty twenty-four to twenty-five school year. So, so we're, we're still keeping track of, of that data now, even though we're in beginning stages of the current school year. So, so what is the, uh, uh, obviously it's not, it's not looked at, at an annual basis. There, there's another way to compile it is, is that day by day or week by week or month by month? How, how does that work this early in, in the, the school year?
I don't want to speak for the principals, but I know they look at it every single day. We have dashboards, um, when, when you all approved our purchase of Synergy, it really created an opportunity, a platform for real-time data. Um, they can drill down to the kid level and say, okay, that now this kid is chronically absent. And so I think a couple of them mentioned just grabbing some of those kids. And I think Ms. Hoffman's chomping at the bit to speak to that.
I, I'm going to say Dr. Kip's create, helping to create that dashboard is essential. We, we literally look at it on a daily basis, discuss it with the administrative team. Dr. Grimes has done an excellent job with the counseling department and guiding them on monitoring and, um, looking at that data too, in order to determine who our, you know, at-risk kids are. We can sort that data in so many ways. We can sort it by grade level, by number of absence, by number of present days, by who's closest to being chronically absent. It has the countdown for us to how to get those kids back to being, um, in attendance regularly. And our counselors use that when they are pulling groups and doing, and checking in and working with kids on, hey, if we can get you here so many more days, what, you know, it's back in the game and here's, here's what it can do for you. They spend a lot of time working with kids and parents about that as well. So that information, that daily data is, it's, it's what keeps us going.
Right.
Say answer your question.
It does. That's good to know. Thank you both.
You bet. Ms. Schmidt.
I have a question. You probably have it. I don't want you to have to spend a bunch of time if you don't. But do you have like a spreadsheet that has the schools listed, their goals for the year? And like their free and reduced lunch rate, just so we have an idea what they're working towards?
So their, um, their goals are within their Kansas Star Plan. So I don't necessarily have that in a list, but I'm happy to get that.
I was going to say, we can provide that Friday, uh, just like Dr. Kip gave them their list of here's where all the chronic absenteeism or here's all the test scores. So we can provide that to the attachment to the update.
Yeah, that'd be awesome.
Yep.
Other, I have a question, but first I want to see since Mr. Munoz is on the phone. Oh, okay. Mr. Munoz is not on the phone. Uh, so with the continued push down on the percentages or the rates, uh, is there a thought or does, um, the principals that are here with us tonight, do any of you uh, feel like there's still big barriers? Um, you know, whether it's barriers left over from COVID with the spike or, um, parental involvement or certain, are there things that still get in the way of continuing to move that needle, needle down?
Can we start with Mr. Hague to get his voice in the space? And then, uh, Quincy, because you have barriers, but you also have some, uh, other, uh, solutions that, uh, haven't been shared here that you all use in your school. Uh, but let's start with Mr. Hague, uh, and if there are strategies that you haven't, haven't been mentioned that you use, feel free to share that, but then talk about barriers.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson. Um, yes, uh, one of the biggest barrier we face is poverty and how that impacts, uh, several of our families in regards to transportation, uh, food. Uh, just, just everything in relation to poverty is, is probably our biggest barrier that we combat every day. Um, we are constantly reaching out to parents and offering them resources, uh, whether that be hooking them up with the metro bus system or helping them decipher city bus routes, uh, hooking them up with the community cupboard that the district has, uh, including, uh, our harvesters that we have once a month. Uh, that, that's been a big help in creating those positive relationships, showing our families that we are invested in them. Uh, we are asking them to be just as invested as their children in their education as we are with their students as well. Um, we have a, we have a, uh, incentive program here, much like other schools do as well, where students earn points for, uh, different things. And one of those is their attendance. We, we, uh, award students, anybody with a ninety percent or higher attendance rate, uh, just, just have it being at school gets them points that they can use in their school store. And that's been a huge motivator for several of our kids. Once we get them through the doors and they understand that, hey, I can be rewarded just for being here at school. And, and on top of the relationships, which is the he- biggest key that we have, uh, building those relationships, making our students feel safe here, feel that they're wanted here and that they belong here. Those have been the biggest things that have helped us.
Thank you, Mr. Hague. We're going to go to Quincy and Ms. Sharp. What is Quincy's on behalf of the principal, uh, that is out right now? What's their, uh, poverty rate as well as their, uh, chronic absenteeism rate as of today?
It was ninety-two percent on Dr. Kip's most recent special needs.
That's their free lunch rate?
Yes, ma'am.
And their chronic absenteeism rate?
Was seventeen.
All right. And we'll turn it over. Ms. Harshaw, you want to briefly, uh, share just, uh, what's the biggest barrier and what is a strategy that you're using that may not have been mentioned?
Absolutely. Um, so our biggest barrier is probably like Mr. Hague said, transportation and poverty. And we have a couple of different ways that we are really bridging those gaps. Um, one is that we have a really strong and extensive mental health team that forms those connections with families and connects them to resources. And then probably our, our biggest factor in being able to get kids to school is that we do have a school van. So if a student calls and says, I missed the bus or I don't have a way to get there today, we say, no problem. And we load up a couple of members of the mental health team and we go and pick them up. Um, we use the van daily, multiple times a day. Um, and, and oftentimes we're picking up three, four, five kids at a time.
Thank you. Anyone else who wants to share barriers that, uh, that's something that's, um, that's uppermost in their mind that has not been shared?
I think, uh, what I've seen an increase at the middle level anyway is mental health. Um, that has been a struggle, continues to be a struggle, uh, greater than I've seen it prior to the COVID pandemic.
Ms. Hoffman, this is Dr. Schumacher. Is that in, uh, avoidance? So as far as like anxiety in school avoidance?
Anxiety, yes, definitely. An, an increase in anxiety, um, depression. Um, I personally, I think it's just got used to being isolated and it was hard, it's been hard for them to, to come back from that. And that continues to be a struggle.
Yep. Thank you. Anything else from the board? I don't think so.
Our principals have had a long day. Thank you for hanging around with us till seven tonight before dinner. And we were part of your dinner conversation about chronic absenteeism. You are exceptional. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
That concludes our chronic absenteeism, uh, report and I'll turn it back over to, uh, you, Dr. Schumacher.
Yeah. And I think I'm going to turn it over to Mrs. Whitman because we'll move into the discussion items. The first one is the recommendations from the policy committee and then we'll move into kind of a little discussion on Boswell.
Good evening. Uh, we have eighteen policy, uh, edits and changes, uh, on the agenda this evening under twenty point one. Uh, we're going to highlight just four of them. Uh, most of them, as you, uh, go through them are just what I call cleanup edits, trying to tighten the language, updating the language as to, uh, the operations side. Uh, but the first one is, uh, twenty-four sixty oh three. This is a new regulation and it was required by a new statute passed by the legislature, seventy-two sixty-two eighty-eight in twenty twenty-four, basically requires boards, um, to adopt cardiac emergency response plans, uh, in our operations. Ms. Denman, uh, is the individual who be, will be responsible with working with principals at the building level, uh, to implement this plan. Uh, so, and, and basically what you see in the regulation is what the statute requires, uh, so that everyone's clear about what the plan, um, must contain. This plan is submitted to, uh, the Kansas Department of Health and Environment also for approval. Uh, the second one I want to talk about is twenty-four seventy-five. And it's dealing with, as you will note, a lot of the edits to the, uh, policies are related to wellness, food service, uh, requirements, uh, for nutrition. Uh, but we also have in, uh, twenty-four seventy-five, uh, there are guidelines and requirements for advertising, uh, particularly at the Hummer Sports Park. Uh, and, uh, we did, did a cleanup there. Uh, basically there was a, uh, requirement that, uh, any advertisement, uh, be approved by the Hummer Sports Park Advisory Board. Uh, staff told us that this board has not met for ten years. Uh, so we cleaned up that language and, uh, any advertising, uh, at Hummer Sports Park has to be approved by the, the director of, of operations. The third major change is on sixty-one fifty. Uh, you will remember that in twenty twenty-four, we did make changes to this policy, which is the graduation, um, requirements, uh, and, uh, uh, the, these are basically cleanups. Uh, there have been some adjustments by the State Board of Education. Uh, the, uh, the FAFSA application is no longer required. Uh, so, uh, that was deleted. Uh, and then, uh, we also made some other edits to the regulation. We're going to bring back the sixty-one fifty, uh, when it's brought back to you, uh, at the next board meeting. We did notice one small edit there on the second page. There's a node inserted there that should not be there. So we will take care of that and, uh, correct that. Uh, and then the other regulations attached to that are basically clarifying that under Kansas law, uh, Kansas law has a law that basically says any students who've been in the custody of, uh, DCF, Department of Children's and Families or juvenile justice, they may graduate with lower credits, which is twenty-one credits. USD five oh one requires twenty-four credits, uh, but the regulations recognize, uh, that there are certain students due to extenuating circumstances, um, uh, including, uh, issues related to, to mental health, uh, behaviors, uh, and life circumstances, uh, that may want to graduate with twenty-one credits. Under current policy, just the principal approves that. What we've added is some, uh, to make sure that the high schools are being consistent. Uh, we have added, uh, that both the, the lead principal, which would be Mr. Dick, uh, and Ms. Wallace would also need to approve, uh, those applications to, to graduate with twenty-one credits. Um, and finally, the, the last item there is basically a, a, in a agreement, uh, that, um, the Historical Society at Topeka High requested. Uh, it really is not one of, uh, uh, the board's policies or regulations, uh, but it's included just for your information. Uh, the Historical Society contacted Mr. Dick. And for a high school as large as Topeka High, that's been in existence, I think since nineteen thirty-one, that they have an abundance, uh, of, uh, old trophies on the third floor. And they wanted to have a system of being able to deal with those, um, trophies that, uh, are, are forty and fifty and sixty years old, uh, and they, they just don't have room for them. So they, uh, submitted to Mr. Dick, uh, and he submitted that to us just for your information that this will be the process, uh, that the Historical Society will use in dealing with the, uh, uh, the overabundance, uh, success of all the trophies that they have, have earned. With that, I'll be happy to stand for any questions you might have.
Questions from the group? No, I don't think so.
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Whitman.
Right. And Mr. President, with your permission, I note that the next item on the agenda is a discussion of the, the future of Boswell Park.
Yep.
As a matter of background, uh, I'd like to, uh, mention just three items that first of all is that USD five oh one has legal title, which means we, uh, the district owns the Boswell Park. However, since nineteen seventy-seven, when the city, uh, with the city and the county, there have been formal and informal agreements that basically give the city and now the county exclusive use, uh, of the park. Uh, and that was done in exchange for them providing either the city or the county, the, the mowing and the maintenance. Uh, the agreements in the past have also included, uh, the city and now the county to make any, any improvements or changes, um, uh, to the park. Uh, so as the board discusses, uh, the future use of Boswell Park, I wanted to provide some historical background, uh, uh, on that park. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Whitman. Um, so I think looking at this time now, it's, we have the ability to discuss, you know, kind of our thoughts as far as the future of Boswell Park. Um, we know that, um, we've had a couple of times, um, where we've talked about it in the past and we've had, uh, community members come in, uh, talk to us about the importance of that park in their community. And so, uh, we wanted to make time to be able to discuss that in open session. And I think Mrs. Schmidt.
Yeah, I just know that they put together this presentation of possible proposed educational activities around Boswell Park. If we could discuss that for the group at large.
Yeah. Yeah. So I know that there was, uh, a group that went out maybe a couple of weeks ago. Um, and Mrs. Wallace was one of the ones through teaching and learning and kind of looking at some ideas for the space and ways that five oh one could use it. So Mrs. Wallace, if you could.
Yes. Ms. Wallace, as you speak to that, if that was sent to Mr. Reiner, he'd like to, uh, pull that on up as well. All right. We'll turn it over to you, Ms. Wallace.
Click tally, put it in the folder. Okay. Um, so yes, uh, the consulting teachers for, um, all of our various contents took a field trip to Boswell Park. And, um, really had a great opportunity to collaborate cross-curriculum wise, um, but came up with, and this is just a sample, there were way more and way more math, uh, things that I could fit on a two-page, um, sheet. So, um, some of the activities that we thought were, uh, community-based, so we really looked at, um, by content, but also overall community and some interdisciplinary kinds of things. So, um, the first was, um, similar to the Bourne Trail that we have at Pine Ridge, having an opportunity to have, um, something similar, um, where there are signs and stations throughout the park that, um, the community as well as classes could participate with. that the community as well as classes could participate with. Music concerts in the park. We have a lot of school concerts. I'm not sure that we do a lot of district-wide concerts at elementary and middle and that would be a beautiful setting to do that, as well as like a movie in the park. Talked a lot about city design and, you know, taking on the role of city manager and how you could design the park so that it met the needs of the community, including, you know, is it accessible to patrons with disabilities? Is it kid-friendly? Just, you know, taking all of those things into consideration. And then you have a list of things that are science-related, from model rocketry to, you know, tagging monarch butterflies, creating a butterfly garden, as well as language arts. Very excited about the idea of using the gazebo as a possible place to do some Raiders Theater or a poetry slam kind of thing. And then on the back, lots of math at every grade level from primary to seniors and high school. And then third, social studies. We used to take a Topeka trip in social studies and we haven't done that, but they do focus on community. And so having an opportunity to go to the park and to explore some of its history. I was unaware, but it is a national historic African-American site as well as connected and related to Brown v. Board. So a partnership with Brown v. Board and creating some activities with that, along with mapping the park. Everybody immediately said geocaching as a great way to even learn longitude and latitude and what GPS is. And then fine arts and all kinds of things you can do with nature as it relates to art.
Thank you, Ms. Wallace. So those were kind of some ideas. If TPS chose to continue with ownership of the park and ways to invest back into the park and hopefully back into the community. Other thoughts? Yes, Mrs. Schmidt?
So I know we've had community present. As I've discussed before, you know, we're neighbors in the in the communities in which our schools and our properties reside. And community has come forward and said that the play equipment is hazardous to the people that are currently utilizing the park. So what kind of talks or discussion or what ideas are there for in resolving that issue so that we can make sure it's a safe space?
Yeah, so Dr. Gray and I met with Ms. Burton and I believe she's here tonight. And we met and we looked at the park and and the equipment. We've got pictures. And she's also provided, some of our questions was was what were some of the commitments that were made that had not been commit or not had been completed in reference to that equipment. And so we're looking at that. And then our next steps are to have discussions depending on what the board wants to do with that space is to look at what improvements we would need to do to that.
Yeah.
I have one more question. Do we, it was mentioned that we have historically had agreements with the county and the city in regards to the park. Do we have those documents? Or were they like backroom handshake?
There is a.
Up until twenty twenty three, there was an agreement. And I think in the last two years, the discussion has been around the future of Boswell Park. But yes, up until twenty twenty three, there was, there was an agreement. Basically, USD five oh one owns it and the the city previously and then the county had exclusive use of it with the agreement, in the agreement that they would do the mowing and maintenance. And then also there was an agreement, part of the agreement was that any improvements they wanted to make, they could make with the approval of the board. So that's, that's why the future Boswell Park discussion is 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 relevant right now.
Thank you. I know that's probably repeating it for some of us, but a lot of times these conversations are happening with a select group of people. And so I want to make sure that we're providing all the context to people that are listening online or in the room this evening, that they have all the facts and discussions as well. So, thank you.
Yeah, thank you for that. Other comments on Boswell or thoughts? I'm kind of interested in the various board members' thoughts going forward with Boswell Park. And I will call on you if you Mrs. Schmidt can go first because she's.
So my thought is is around being neighbor. And I think it's an awesome opportunity since we already own the property. And I just want to make sure if we own the property, we're going to invest in the property and we're going to address the things so that we're good neighbors in those neighborhoods, that we're not the neighbor that everybody hates and goes, oh, look, that stuff is falling apart. The paint's peeling off the house. They need to mow their lawn. I want to make sure that we're keeping the property up and that we're really going to utilize it. Because there are people in the neighborhoods that do. And so if we're not going to put forth that commitment, then I think we need to look at alternatives. So.
Thank you, Ms. Mr. Tatum?
So I guess my question is with the list, and maybe this is more for Mrs. Wallace. With with the 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 list of some really cool ideas that that you provided for us and that that you've already started outlining, are we are we narrowing down our options or are we saying you know, once we, once we make a decision on the park, if we move forward with retaining ownership, we're going to do all these things at some capacity or in in may, I don't know if that was a part of Mrs. Stranethan that, you know, the the follow-up conversation that you and Dr. Gray will be having. I I'm I'm just trying to get a sense of the scope of what we are looking at and and how that's going to unfold.
Mr. Tatum, I asked Ms. Wallace's team what can happen with the park if it's retained and can you give the board some feedback? Can anything happen with the park? Instructionally, how can this become an outdoor classroom? To that end, she took her entire staff there on a field trip for a portion of the day to look at how might they use it. There may be far more ideas than that that's on the page, but just based on that field trip, that's just feedback to you that if you retain ownership, those are some ideas they have. Initially, possibilities. Maybe not that whole list will be done, maybe half the list or they'll start with some of the items and the list may be far longer than that. But that's what that came from.
Okay, okay, that that's that's helpful. Yeah, thank you.
Do you have further thoughts on kind of what what you want to see for Boswell Park?
There are so many options. Honestly, I find it hard to narrow it down because I think there's a lot of really, really great ideas that have a lot of potential with with just what we've been talking about so far. So I think there's, I think there's some benefit in retaining ownership of Boswell Park. I I sure would like to see, see a lot of these ideas be realized for the benefit of of our our students.
So one of the ideas that my team came up with is, you know, we we have the Kansas property and we do a lot of events there, but that is a very staff-heavy requirement to make those events come off. And so the idea was around this, that we could create like a model rocketry kit that could be checked out by a classroom with the lesson plans and the stations and all of the activities. And they could then manage that by taking it with them to the park and doing those lessons. So it would be very much determined by, I mean, and we could do those kinds of boxes or kits for a lot of activities and ideas. And then teachers could have the opportunity to select, similar to what we do with even like the extension office. So they provide things that can be checked out or that they travel to them and then they provide that activity for their own students.
Specific to Boswell, I think perhaps one of the more most exciting pieces was the connection with Brown v. Board. It's very unique to that park and being able to put a historical piece in that park where you can come and read about it, much like when you go to the Brown v. Board Museum and you can walk and read all of these different pieces and you see all these exhibits for them to create some sort of station where you can look at that. So that was perhaps the one of the most exciting pieces that they came away with after doing research before they went on their field trip.
Thank you. Love it.
Thank you, Mr. Tatum.
You're welcome.
Dr. Beeson.
Calling on me. So we are not discussing the decision-making.
Correct, just kind of our thoughts. This is all discussion. There's no action being taken.
I I don't have a lot to say outside of the decision-making. I think that all of these ideas are certainly excellent if they can be put into place. Yeah, I don't have a lot of, a lot to say outside of making a decision.
That's great.
Thank you.
Dr. Bonebrake, do you have anything to? Dr. Bonebrake, come back on please.
Have any decision to make, just discussion.
No, no, this is just discussion and being able to discuss. Yeah, so that our community knows.
Maybe they'd cut down chronic absenteeism if they know they could go catch a monarch butterfly and tag it. Something I, no, a lot of wonderful activities. I just wonder if we can afford the upgrade and do all of that.
Yeah, and I think, I don't know, Dr. Anderson and Ms. Stranethan, I think you're a part of this discussion. We talked about, you know, as far as the day-to-day upkeep. You know, we had talked with Mr. Schaefer and their ability to even as simple as like mowing the park, that kind of stuff, our our ability to do that and take over that. It felt like that wasn't a big ask.
Correct. So probably the bigger ask is going to be when you look at the equipment and where that's standing at this point, there'll be a point if the board, you know, decides to move forward with that is that we would have to look at what that cost would be then to replace or to maintain the equipment that's at that. So and that as we continue to do our facility assessment, that'll be part, that'll be an area that we'll also look at to see what that's going to look like.
Yep, thank you. I think I think I would agree with Ms. Schmidt. I, you know, it's we had our budget meeting, revenue-neutral rate meeting, and we have people that help fund our schools and don't have kids in our school and you know, some of that's greater good and our hope is that we're educating these students to become productive, productive members of society, but some of it is also that community use and having a space that we help maintain and maybe even enrich, but also to allow the community to get more use out of that space, I think could be pretty powerful. It, a lot of the things on the list that Mrs. Wallace provided don't cost very much at all. And so that can be a very powerful tool. But like Ms. Stranethan said, there are some needs at that park right now. And so if we're not going to make that the somebody else's problem, then that becomes our our solution or something that we need to solve. So I I I I think I would be interested at least, and I think I've heard a couple of the other members to see what that looks like and see if that's something that we can take on because I think I think there's worth in that.
Thank you. So what we're hearing you say, we are preparing for facilities assessment that's occurring this year over the coming months and Mrs. Trinethan is and team are all preparing for that to occur. So as that occurs for her to add Boswell into that space to look at what all it takes to make sure that we continue to address the facilities and the equipment. Meanwhile, we prepare to begin maintaining that at this time while that assessment is occurring. And then we'll bring that assessment back to you all. And if we're retaining the park at that time, then we'll plan to, what I'm hearing you say, we need to be prepared to invest in it related to the equipment as well as the ideas that Ms. Wallace may have through teaching and learning.
Yep, I think so.
Thank you for the direction.
Thank you. Anything further on Boswell? If not, we'll move to board member comments because we will take action on the policies when we come back next board meeting. So, Dr. Bonebrake, I will start with you.
Health insurance, maybe we should discuss in executive sometime. I just don't understand how a company can lose a couple million dollars a year in ensuring a large bulk of people, but you know, few hundred thousand, you're talking some real money after a while, but a couple million a year? No big deal. Which reminds me of the ignorance and apathy that, but we won't go there. Wellness, health and wellness met and it's kind of combined. The Wellness Committee probably still has another two thousand t-shirts to give away. I don't know how that's going to happen. And probably twenty three thousand dollars to spend somehow. Maybe they could give it to Boswell Park for exercise equipment. The president of the committee has moved to Texas and they're trying to reduce the numbers in the committee from like thirty to six, which would probably help, at least the person that's sending out the emails. But that's basically all I have and I'll see y'all in a couple of weeks because I'll be going to another continent for a while.
Yeah. We'll expect you to call in from from Italy. Bring back new shoes from Italy to replace the other ones. Dr. Beeson.
The only thing I have to add on Health Insurance Committee is we spent a lot of time talking about access to physicals because there is essentially a a charge per month for not having an annual physical for our staff, just to incentivize that annual visit. But a lot of discussion about really figuring out what we can do to help our staff get access to physicals. There's a lot of discussion about waits to get in to see different providers and how we might be able to arrange something, expand what kind of providers people can see to get that done, just to make sure that we can eliminate as many barriers as possible for folks so that that doesn't feel truly punitive. Equity Council met for the first time this school year and we had a great turnout. Dr. Kip gave a lot of demographic information, which was really helpful. Our student population is down a little bit compared to projections and this was as of September eleventh. Discussion about Highland Park has sort of a one percent, is that right, one percent drop in Hispanic students this school year and and really looking into why that may be. The various leaders on the call made suggestions for data analysis, how we wanted to break down student data. Also, teacher and staff demographic data, what is representation look like for our students in their teachers and other school staff? One of the highlights was hearing from Mr. Elijah Griffin and Mr. Deandre Phillips about starting a Black Student Union at Topeka West, which I think is going to be really important for our students. Also fabulous that there are these black men in the building that students feel comfortable reaching out to about wanting to start something like that. So love the idea of looking, we're going to be looking at the face behind the data. Dr. Anderson challenged everyone to sort of have those conversations, but then then what? So what will our action items be related to equity in the district? So I think it's going to be a really interesting year for Equity Council. I just wanted to comment on the KNI, KNI partnership. I remember us discussing that in executive session and learning about that, but tonight was really helpful to me personally to understand what will be provided. what we'll be providing in our community and to other children in the state. So I appreciate that very much. Um, we had a board retreat on was that just Saturday? That feels so long to me. Um. Uh, thank you to all of the administrators and staff who were there, the um, the special needs index kind of digging into that, and the discussion was really valuable and helped my understanding a lot. Uh, really important information for all of us to understand. I had the opportunity to visit Ross and Eisenhower this week and spend some time with Dr. Gardner. Um, and I know we've all received feedback on sort of the transformation there so far this school year, and I just want to say that I saw it with my own eyes. It was really an incredible visit. I saw kids engaged in every classroom. No one was wandering halls. I didn't see any, you know, discipline issues. Students were polite. They, you know, just really very different than what was described in the past. And so kudos to everyone in that building making that happen. And then I think my last point is that my girls and I attended Family Fitness Fun Night last night, and I saw many of you there, but it was um, just an incredible time. Everyone there was having a wonderful time. We will continue to look forward to attending. Um, so thanks to everyone who I thought that's got to be a huge endeavor to put together. So um, I think that's it.
Mr. Tatum.
Well, I don't have a whole lot on my list, just a a couple of things. Actually, one of them, I'm surprised Dr. Beeson didn't mention, you forgot something. Last Friday, Dr. Beeson, Mr. Mignoz, Mrs. Bowley and I had the opportunity to, you're welcome to to um, be a part of Highland Park's Honor Roll Assembly. And um, that was, that that's always just a wonderful experience of just congratulating the kids and and making a big deal of their accomplishments that they they know we're watching. They feel good and they feel encouraged to continue to keep up the good work. Um, the only committee meeting that I had, um, a- and I'm the only person that would be there. A- actually, let me also mention, um, I think most of us were at the um, Topeka Public Schools Foundation Annual Breakfast. Um, and uh, Dr. Anderson did a great job of of really kind of giving a state of the district uh, address and involving uh, some of our students who who were there. Um, I I thought it was a, it was a great breakfast and um, really got a chance to talk with and rub shoulders with some folks that I I didn't know very well and got got to know um, better uh, during the time that that we were at the breakfast. So that same afternoon, the um, TPS Foundation Committee that I'm on, and I'm I'm the only board member on this committee, they had a meeting. So actually have some some updated information for you all um, based upon um, the uh, uh, the the success or the outcomes of the the breakfast from earlier that morning. Two thousand dollars is what it looks like they raised from the breakfast. Uh, from people attending the breakfast alone. There was another fifteen hundred dollars that were raised um, from people who are contributing. There's a i- in in Anderson Fund, you guys might remember if you were there, they were, they were talking about an Anderson Fund, not related to our Dr. Anderson. Um. Named for another Anderson that that uh, was influential with the 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 foundation uh, a number of years ago, but they they are considering um, th- that breakfast event to be a success on a number of different levels. Um, so did want to be sure to report that back to you all. Um, other than that, i- it it looks like um, uh, our our investments are just kind of plugging away. Um, there's a number of factors that are influencing um, uh, how how that progress is is going. Um, job growth has slowed sharply and that that tends to to have some input or or have some effect on um, our investment strategies and yields. Global stocks remain in an uptrend. Um, there's a, but uh, there's two-year treasury yields that are in a downtrend while ten-year yields broke support. Global central banks are buying more gold in historically strong season for gold prices. Um, so they, the the members of the committee talked about that as if i- it it were a good thing for those of you who are are not really keyed into uh, global investment strategies. So th- these are good, especially since gold has broken out again. Um, so i- it it's good for us to um, kind of keep our our finger on the pulse of a lot of uh, what is occurring with our investments. I, and the the um, TPS Foundation is kind of managing that process, but it's being overseen by by us on the board. And so um, I we, I think these meetings are quarterly. And and I always learn quite a bit from from attending these meetings. So what I learned, I pass along to you all. And uh, I don't think, uh, Policy Committee on Monday, I may or may not be there. I think that's the only other thing going on that I can think of. So pass it along.
Mr. Tatum, can you repeat the investment advice you have for me? No, just kidding.
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll talk.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Ms. Schmidt.
Um, I too wanted to just take a minute to thank everybody, uh, the leadership team for coming out and spending time with us Saturday. It's an opportunity for us to get together as a board in the form of a public meeting um, and talk about some things uh, that aren't always business-related, that are more about sometimes just educating us because we don't have the advantage of doing the work day-to-day. Um, in that conversation, Ms. Kramer uh, talked about our CI three T uh, that screens for internalizing behavior issues and character strong. And so um, we were all given a book last year and the Kansas State Board of Education read the, wrote the, read the book um, The Anxious Generation as part of their um, determining that cell phones should be limited in schools. And obviously, um, we limited them in schools for this year. Um. That book is written by a psychologist that argues the significant increase of anxiety and depression caused by a rewiring of childhood that shifts from kids being play-based to screen or phone-based. And um, if you read the book and you have kids or you are in a, in a profession where you can watch kids and um, you you can close your eyes and see all this stuff playing out. So one of the things I would like to encourage us as a district and us as a board is to possibly start examining how we might be able to reduce screen time. Um, I know sitting on the DCAC Committee when we originally made the recommendation for computers, I think, or Chromebooks, I think the idea was is that we were going to save a lot of money because we weren't going to have to pay for the books. But I think the curriculum salespeople just shifted it from books to software application packages. And then on top of that, now we have the added expense of sending Chromebooks home and getting a lot of damage to them. And that there's just a whole multitude of how often we're having to replace them. Um, I think Ms. Wallace, you said books were ten to twelve years, seven to ten years? Seven to ten? And you had left before I could ask you, I know laptops when I was in IT was average lifespan was two to three. Are Chromebooks the same? About four. So um, you know, I I think we need to do some digging and see, you know, benefit both around mental health and financial. I- i- is it time to look back? And I I would love, we love to be a a leading district in doing things like T-Calc. And I feel like we were kind of on the back end of the cell phone thing. I'd love to see if we could start looking at this and maybe be the leading trend of getting students more engaged. I think with the events in the world of this last week, it's evident that when I am not face-to-face with you and I can hide behind a screen, I might say or do a lot of things that I wouldn't do if I had to look at you and see your response or how you took something. And I think there's a piece of that in education as well. It's easy for kids to bully each other. It's easy for them to be distracted. Um, you know, it's easy for them to text and get on messages and, you know, do a hundred other things because kids are way more proficient at that stuff than we are, and so they can find ways around it. So I'd just like to challenge us as a board to dig into that a little bit and see if there would be a cost benefit, an education benefit to to maybe modifying it. Maybe, maybe there's some type of hybrid thing. Maybe we conduct some type of pilot and say, you know, with these certain things, we're going to go back to books and try to collect data because I do believe we should be data-driven in what we do. And then on that um, whole fiscal responsibility thing, um, as I said, my new job has really um, called a lot of attention to budgets and finance. And um, let me tell you, we have been pretty lucky being the, one of the top three um, slices of the taxing authority pie in Topeka. And on a house over just over a hundred thousand dollars, city collects about twenty-five percent USD five oh one thirty in Shawnee County thirty-two. Um, we, in my tenure as a school board member, have never had anybody show up until this year to talk about exceeding revenue neutral. And I have been watching things all across the state. There was one county that had a hundred and fifty people come and talk about how increasing property taxes are making it so they can't even live. You know, people that worked their entire lives and paid their houses off and thought, okay, I'm good. Now that that with the the cost of everything going up, they're not making enough money to be able to pay the personal property taxes and and they're, they're getting taxed out of their homes. So the the second challenge I want to bring to us tonight is I really want us to start looking in, and maybe the Finance Committee does a lot of this, and that is a committee I've not sat on. How are we, are we being the most fiscally responsible that we can? Are we looking at our contracts and going we, we really need to know what we're getting for this money that we're spending? What are the deliverables that you're going to provide us? Is there no one in our district that already does that can, that can provide that same information? Um, the state, I know several of us have worked for the state before. You know, we went through analysis about was it cheaper to rent a car? Um, own a car or reimburse somebody for mileage? You know, I I and I, and maybe we do this already and I just don't know, but I think, I think it is our responsibility because we are one of those top three slices of that pie to make sure that we are being very conservative and fiscally responsible with the dollars that the taxpayers are giving us. And so that's going to mean really, really evaluating what we're doing with our money. You know, is, would it be cheaper to give everybody a cell phone reimbursement? Or just give them a second phone? There may be some legal stuff around that. But you know, I I just think we need to make sure we're asking those questions and looking at those. So as people come, you know, we we have those answers and we can say, hey, you know what? We we've thought about that and this is what we know. So.
Thank you. Um, I would also echo you, Dr. Beeson. Thank you to the staff that helped with the retreat. Uh, thank you to Mr. Bruner for sticking around for the whole meeting. You don't have to do that. But uh, I also, as a uh, community pediatrician, knowing the challenges that some of my patient patients face. Um, and for them to be able to have space where they can be safe um, and and continue to get support and and to have that space for some of our students. And and as someone who helps guide parents and patients through dental care for kids with complex needs, that's a that's a huge thing because a lot of these kids are going to Children's Mercy in Kansas City. And I will tell you, that clinic is a mess. So it is not an easy task. Um. Um, and so that is fantastic and I appreciate uh, the work that's been done on that. Um, I also want to thank Mr. Lee. So in our consent agenda, we approved the donation uh, from Mr. Lee to be used for payment of unpaid meal balances. Uh, my family also enjoyed the Family Fun and Fitness Night. Maybe not the most fit family there, but definitely one of the most fun.
It's fitness before fun.
Fun, fitness, fun is number one. Uh, Topeka West right now is having the Greek mythology Olympia Ganza, or Ganza. It's their first play that they're having, their theater department. Uh, so it's tonight, so we're missing that, but it's also um, on Saturday night, the twentieth at seven PM. Um, and then I will be unable to make it, but on Wednesday, I hope some of us can make it for the college prep um, jacketing ceremony. Uh, that'll be Wednesday, the twenty-fourth at nine. Um, that is a very special time for those students and we get to enjoy those students' lane uh, who spoke at our um, convocation. That's what I was thinking retaliation. That's not it. Convocation, uh. I, uh, yeah, Lane was also at the Foundation Breakfast, but he got his jacket at the ceremony last year. Um, and so these are some of these students that we will see come back uh, down the road. So if some of you can go in my absence, I would very much appreciate it. Um, and I think, oh, and Personnel Met. We had that meeting earlier. One of the interesting things we talked about is there are certain areas, um, like let's say maintenance. Um, but also Ms. Williams is working on this with Mr. Reiner around IT, trying to develop partnerships with Washburn Tech so that we can have students maybe that are going into these programs or students at Washburn Tech that are part of these programs and almost like the teacher apprentice, but having these students um, starting to work in our facilities and gain some experience and then hopefully have them continue on as a a full-time employee. So that's pretty exciting. Um, but that is all I have. So I will look for a motion to a chair.
So moved.
Okay, in a second. Dr. Beeson. And we uh, raise our right hand. Yeah, in favor and anybody opposed? Oh, okay, thank you.